Good evening. For reelection.
Yeah, okay.
Good evening, everyone. This is part two of the Board of Selectmen's meeting. First, six o'clock and Board of Selectmen's meeting. Selectman Lisa Pachico, Selectwoman Lisa Pachico, Selectman Lebron Gardner Falsadick, Town Administrator Richard Brown, and our Administrative Assistant, Ally Galls. And first thing we'd like to do is have a moment of silence for a young student that passed away the end of last week. He was a student in that upon a group. I'd like to express our sincere condolences to the Fiola families. They're Free Town residents, and it's very difficult for anybody to leave any family member. The other thing I'd like to do, sitting in the back there, in the back of the room, is our Fire Chief Gary Sylvia. And Gary and his firefighters did a fabulous job the other day on a pretty big fire down off of Brayley Road. Structured fire, a company that caught fire, and they were there for probably around three hours, Gary, before you got things marked up, or a little more.
Yeah, a little more.
A little more than three hours. And thank our Free Town firefighters, our Lakewood firefighters, and our Dartmouth firefighters that assisted in the town of Free Town to put that fire out. Okay, next thing on the agenda is we normally sign the payroll warrants and the other vendor warrants, which we've already done. And we also open it up to anybody in the room that wants to talk to the Board of Selectmen. Does anybody here wants to talk to the Board of Selectmen?
I have a question.
Just give us your name and where you live.
Henry Cabral, East Holland Road. Kind of curious on the taxes. I was understanding that they weren't going to go up, and this year versus last year, they went up over $200 some odd dollars.
At your place?
At my place, yeah. So I'm wondering if the Board of Selectmen have any reason why they went up when they weren't supposed to go up? That was my impression.
Well...
Taxes weren't going to go up?
The tax rate went down, both the residential and the commercial tax rates went down. I think you need to look at...
You're talking about the rate itself?
The rate itself went down, yes. You need to look at your assessed value compared to last year.
Yes.
Okay. That's where something changed.
Right. Well, my property tax went down, okay? And evaluation of the building went up more than when it went down. So when you weigh it up, there's an increase of $200 some odd dollars there. Now, you said the rate went down.
Uh, yes.
And I hate to differ with you.
The residential rate went down.
According to this here, residential last year, uh, excuse me.
It did go down.
Yeah, residential last year was 12.12 per thousand.
12.12?
According to what's on the tax bill. And this year was down to 12.61, residential.
Residential this year is 12.61. Last year, it was higher than that. It was higher than 12.61.
According to what's on here...
I don't know what you have. Maybe I can see it. I know the tax rate did go down, and I can tell you that on my own personal tax bill, my evaluations changed. This is 2012.
Well, that's the 2012 bill, right?
No, you need 13.
You need 13. That one's the, that's the 14 bill. Where's your 14 go?
Right here.
Let me see your 14. Do you have your 13 bill?
You need your 13 bill.
Well, that's the one I paid in 13.
Yeah, what's the rate on that? Does it show the rate? No, was it? See, that's, that's the bill.
That's the one that was paid in 13.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's the 13 bill that was paid. It doesn't show the... See, that's...
It's not here.
It's not on here?
It's not on here.
No.
But it's on here.
But that's, this is 2012.
Okay.
This is 2013. This is 14. Now, I know the rate in 14 went down from the rate in 13.
Right. The rates in fiscal 2013 were 12.76.
Okay.
Okay, commercial went down from 1950 to, and this year is 1991, correct?
Commercial?
Commercial.
I think you're a year off, though.
Yes, the rates in, the rates for fiscal year 14 was 12.76. The rates for this year...
Is 12.61.
Is 12.61.
Do you remember what the commercial rate was last year?
No, but I can look it up.
She's going to look up the commercial rate for last year. You're comparing the wrong years. But that doesn't... Your issue is that the, your assessed value went...
Right, it did.
Commercial was 29.54.
29.54 was the commercial rate last year?
29?
29.
Can't be 29.
No.
20 points.
Oh, no, wait, I'll take that back. That wasn't a bad front.
See, you're lucky you live in Free Town.
Yeah. I'm looking it up.
Okay, she's looking. I'll have to wait for that. But the reason is, you're going to have, in essence, you're going to have to talk with the assessors about the assessed value of property. In my case, my own personal one, my house assessed value dropped by 12, uh, my, went up by $12,000.
Oh, you're right, right here.
And my land value went down.
In that one. My land value went down, but my building went up.
All right.
So you're going to talk...
Total valuation went up.
When we were, when we set the tax rate and when we did that this year, and I don't want to say we set the tax rate, but when we decided on the shift, everybody was saying how, not everybody, but people were convinced or misled, not by the board, but just in their own personal mind, when we lowered the rate, when we lowered, when we shifted, when we made the shift a little bit different, everybody thought that since we said it's lower, the tax rate is lower than it was last year. Everybody got in their minds that their taxes were going to go down because the rate went down. But that's not true, because usually every year, your assessment changes. And the assessment changes every year because whether you put on addition, whether your neighbors improved their value of their, of their property, whether it's a year that the company itself goes out and does the assessment, you know, does a true value assessment as opposed to an estimated assessment, all those fall into the factor of whether, what, how your property is assessed. So you, like Paul said, you need to talk to the assessors to see if this was an actual year or if this was an estimated year. But just because the rate goes down does not mean your taxes are going to go down. And then, and we made sure that we said that out loud.
Here, this one has been paid. This is actually paid last year.
But we don't know, you can come up to the rate.
No, I can't.
But the rate went down this year. The rate did go down, but the assessed value changed. We don't know why your assessed value changed. I actually don't know why my assessed value changed. I haven't done anything in my books.
Well, that's why we wanted to bring it up to the fund and see if they could find out why.
Yeah. Again, we don't have any jurisdiction over the Board of Assessors, and they really are bound by what, the Department of Revenue, and they're bound by that. They have their own rules and regulations. So we don't, the only thing that this board does is vote on a shift. And we thought that the shift, we change a shift, and we made sure that the tax rate itself went down, but your assessed value, like in most cases, changes.
Yeah, we can't control it.
Right.
Just like, just my taxes went up too.
So you don't have any control over the assessment at all?
Here's the deal. I don't know if I was going to say this because it came up in a conversation with our lawyers, that I, I said to them, what, what rule, if any, does the Board of Selectmen have over the Assessors' Office? And the answer was none. They're protected by state statutes. They do that purposely so the Selectmen can't influence their decisions. There's not a thing we can do. They're elected. Being quite frank, I spoke with the Secretary of the Assessors' Office today, and I asked her if I could have a couple hours of her time tomorrow to kind of work me through this. So I have a better understanding because I've had a lot of questions about that, one from my wife, because she thought our taxes were going down, and I, you know, I can't get away from her, so I got to find out the answer. But the answer is, I guess, I'm just, a summation here, is that from year, some years you're assessed by a professional company, which the law says you have to be assessed. And they probably do it differently than the Board of Assessors does in the office.
They're in the process of doing that now.
Yeah, they're going around now.
Absolutely, so...
So you're, again, next year, that'll change again.
But I have the same questions. The value of my property went down 15...
Yeah, property went down.
The house went up 15, and the, down 15, and the property went up 30,000. So my question is, how can I sell the land without the house? I'm trying to figure out now. So it's like, and it flip-flopped, and to say I know what's going on, I don't, but I'll have a much better understanding in a week or two, I'll tell you that.
That was one of my questions. I'm kind of curious, you know, land goes down 60,000, the prob, the building goes up 80,000.
Well, I think when they look... I don't know this for sure, but I think when they look at buildings, they look at what the cost of building that would be now, what the cost of lumber and everything would be to build it now, not necessarily what it costs when you built it. I think that's going to be the answer. But like I said, made an appointment with the Assessors' Office to walk me through this again. But I can absolutely state that we have zero control over what the assessors do. They're elected, they're paid, and the statutes set up by the state, federal government, they keep you separated for the, so the board can't influence them. It'd be nice to have the taxes go down in an election year. Ain't going to happen, you know?
Chad.
Say this. Give me a couple, three weeks, come back at the next meeting, maybe I'll have more information. Or maybe we can set some type of meeting up with the Board of Assessors, who know if we can invite them to the meeting, and they can field the questions. I can't speak for them because we have no control.
And actually, you know, maybe, is our virtual town hall up and running?
It's going to be up on Friday.
Okay, great. We'll make sure we can have, like, a little synopsis of how land and property is assessed, and maybe they can have that on their webpage.
That'd be good.
So if people have a question, they can just...
Give me till next week to post that one.
Okay, well, that's fine. I need my agenda.
Get the buggers out. All right, next on the agenda is...
Anybody else here?
Anybody else here that wants to talk to the Board of Selectmen? Come on.
Chuck, come on down.
Chuck, you want to talk to them?
You're the next person on the...
Come on down. Come on down.
Price is Right. Good evening.
Good evening, Chuck.
Chapter 90, final reports. Pleasant Street, North Main Street. Both yards came in well under budget, which is good.
How much?
Pleasant Street came in $31,499 under budget. North Main Street came in $56,438 and change in budget.
Money to play with.
Next year, hopefully, yes.
And can I just say that I know...
Set the tax rate with that.
I know that, I know that you're just going to say, "All in a day's work, that's what we do."
Yes, ma'am.
But I have to say that the roads in this community, in the town of Free Town, were far superior, and I will say this on record, than any of our neighboring towns, and that is due to you and your crew, and thank you very, very much.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
If anybody drives out of Free Town to go to any one of the neighboring towns...
It's crazy, the difference.
You absolutely know where the town line is, without a doubt.
Me too, Ed. Just remember all these pleasant things that you've said. Because when you get done signing your name...
What do you got?
I'm going to hit you with, we haven't exhausted the snow budget yet, but we're pretty close.
Really? I'm kidding, go ahead. It's one of those things. What are you at, Chuck?
We're basically, we've spent, as of the 10th of January, $90,709.29. Our snow budget is $100,000. I've got probably $25,000 worth of salt sitting in my yacht right now, so as soon as the bills come due, we will be over. So...
Finance Committee is right behind you.
You need to sign it. You need to sign it.
I know.
And just to, basically...
Exhaust it, come and see us.
Okay?
You should, you're a hundred thousand?
Hundred thousand.
No, you're better off actually signing that, keeping it at 100,000, and raising the difference.
Raising it, yeah, that's what I just said, yep.
Yeah, just spend.
Yeah, you're the only one that's allowed to spend.
No, no, I hadn't seen that, but what we've always done, always done, is, yes, as we get to the point of exhausting the snow budget, this basically gives you permission, gives me permission, to just carry on.
Right.
So, look at that.
That's who needs to sign it, right?
If you would.
Did somebody make a motion for the final reports on those? I didn't hear a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the final reports on the Chapter 90 money.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this is pursuant to Master General Archer, 44, Section 30.
Just make sure that the numbers are...
We hereby acknowledge that the $100,000 appropriated for snow removal, that the 2013 annual town meeting is made official further. As years pass, we authorize you, in your capacity as highway survey, to expend funds in excess of set appropriation for the snow removal as necessary. Need a motion for this?
Make a motion that we fund the snow removal budget as read, also is memo.
To prove the memo.
Prove the memo.
I'll second it with discussion.
Okay, discussion.
I think you need to also let us know incrementally how, how you're exceeding the $100,000. Like, after every snowstorm, if you can let us know where you're at.
Sure.
Okay. Because I'm going to be honest with you, as honest as I was about how great the roads are and everything, and I don't ever remember doing this.
Every year, last year, we spent $390 some odd thousand.
But I don't ever remember it coming before the board, before the fact, that's all.
And I do believe that that's always been sent to the Finance Committee, handle the Board of Selectmen.
It must be the Finance Committee, but that's fine.
And everyone signs it.
It has to be done.
State law says you have to park snow no matter what.
Right.
So we may spend, hopefully, we don't spend anything more this year, but realistically, we're looking at a $400,000 snow removal year, easily. Just these windows.
Right. I, I get the whole process thing. I just don't ever remember, and I'm just being honest with you. Could be me, I just don't remember I was signing like that.
Okay.
Okay. Can I second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. He's going to spend a lot of money. Stop praying for a son.
Like you said, there's a reason why our roots, out of the way they are.
Absolutely.
You know? Sometimes throw nickels at snowflakes, I throw, I throw quarters. And that's, that's the, that's the main difference. Finance Committee take that, vote on it, or whatever, and sign it.
Well, we don't have a majority tonight, so we can't.
You can take the form, do what you wish. We're just going to keep doing what we're doing, and until we get that letter, we won't pay any bills over $100,000. Does that sound kosher, Richard? Just say yes.
Well, this, this money's going to have to come from somewhere else, because...
It doesn't come from you.
Doesn't come from you. We, we do that next year on the, on the recapture.
I don't know that FNCOM has to vote on it.
I don't have to, I don't believe so. But I can, I'll sign it.
Okay, that's fine.
As a chairman, I'll sign it. And acknowledging...
I'll make copies, and I'll get your copies tomorrow, and I'll also put copies in the Finance Committee's office. Other than that, that's that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good.
I mean to...
Good, I'll pack my trash.
Next thing on the agenda tonight is ambulance abatements for the month of December, as submitted by the Fire Chief. The abatements for December 29,03203. Here, a motion?
Motion to approve the ambulance abatements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, also, Chief Sylvia submitted a request here for Free Town. He's back there. Free Town Fire Department is requesting the following fire apparatus be declared as surplus property. FD number phone two, a 1973 International Maxim Form Pumper, with a VIN number of 70722, Charlie Golf Bravo 22082, and a FD number breaker one, a 1968 Jeep Forestry unit, VIN number 28969. Both of these vehicles have been removed from the active service with the Fire Department, and we are now, they are now parked at the Highway Department at 201 Chase Road, waiting to be disposed of. It's your pleasure.
Make a motion to declare as surplus presented by the Fire Chief.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Chief, we're all set. You can come up here.
You can say more than one thing.
Come up here, and we can all hear you.
We have a gentleman who works for the Department of Natural Resources, who wants the boat truck as a, to restore it, and he's wanting the board to know that he'll take possession of that truck if he can. Now, how you guys are going to go about doing that?
We would have to go through a public process to see if there were individuals who are interested, and I would actually do it for both pieces of equipment and come back to the board with the results.
So say that again?
We, we have to go through a public process for the disposition of property. We can't just award it to somebody.
To another agency? To another public agency?
It's not a public agency. It's, it's an individual.
Oh, 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 I just thought they would give some consideration, such rather than scrapping the truck, he's going to try to...
Yeah, I mean, I, if he wants, but work with him, and then, I mean, if no one else wants it, then it kind of becomes a moot point, but, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a process to do it. I talked to the individual about it, told them that we would have to do that once the board declared it surplus, and he understands.
Thanks, Gary.
No, thank you.
Just going to wait a second. Mr. Bob Goddard coming back here? That's interesting.
Right? I don't make this stuff up.
Sneeze, cough, sneeze.
I'm going away, and I tried really hard to stay away from people that are sick. You did this, you put me in the middle.
You're the rose between two thongs. Okay, we have a memo from town clerk Jackie Brown dated January 8, 2014. Petitions submitted, December 27, 2013. Petition A, 206 signatures were certified. Out of the total signatures, 176 were signed before the November 4 special town meeting, 26 were signed after the November 4 special town meeting, and four were not dated. There were 15 signatures that were not certified. Petition B, 206 signatures were certified. Out of the total signatures, 174 were signed before the November 4 special town meeting, 26 were signed after the November 4 special town meeting, and six were not dated. These, there were 19 signatures that were not certified. And what this pertains to are petitions to change the bylaw, Soil Board bylaw, two, two sections of the Soil Board bylaw, and I'm going to refer this to Mr. Brown, who has actually contacted our attorneys regarding this matter.
Yeah, the petition has been received and signatures identified by the town clerk, but the, our attorney, as well as the town clerk, have determined that based upon the submission of the petition, that we would put this on for consideration at our next special town meeting or town meeting. There is no requirement that we call one within 45 days. And I've given that memo to you by email earlier, and I printed out a hard copy, and I have it in front of you.
Has everybody had a chance to look at it?
All right, so there's no action that we have to take tonight?
The only action that we'll take is that we will maintain it and ensure that when we go over warrant articles for our next meeting, that we include this and present it to you.
All right, next thing on the agenda is the annual renewal of Class II and Class III motor vehicle licenses by board. The fallen Class II motor vehicle licenses have to be renewed. DPF Enterprises, Beach Bluff Auto Sales, Bowler's Garage, J&amp;J Auto Sales, Nate's Garage, CJ Auto Sales, Herb's Auto Body Repair. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Discussion, please. Second.
Okay, discussion?
Discussion is, I just want to make sure they're all current on their taxes. And Ally just mentioned they weren't.
Okay, so everybody's current on their taxes?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the second one is Class III Motor Vehicle License, Big Wheels Truck Sales Incorporated.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
With the same caveat that you mentioned before.
Ally?
Yes, yeah.
They're all current?
Yes.
Okay, motion made in second, and all the, and that individual, companies is current on their taxes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Personnel board.
I have one thing, change the status for Christine, Christina Giuzami, for an early retirement incentive, contractual thing, I guess, in the town offers people additional benefit of about a dollar an hour if, in fact, they commit to retiring either two or three years in advance, which she has. So need a motion to approve Christina's change of status, please.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Go ahead. Sorry. Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want this, or, not that I want this, but I would recommend that this would be a separate line item in the upcoming budget, so it's not convoluted in their regular budget, because this is going to change once she retires.
Take her, right?
Yes.
All right, also...
Want a help? Want a help?
Okay, wait a minute. Want a help? No, sorry. Want a help?
Thank you. Please...
We're going to go back to personnel.
Please remember to take your flu shots, okay? The flu is running rampant. It hasn't really hit this area so much, but please just make sure you get your flu shots, and do that for everybody involved, for your families. That's it.
So I can go on vacation.
So I can go on vacation. Did you have your flu shot?
Oh, I did, I did, sure did.
Okay.
No, this isn't the flu. I think I have an allergy to a flu.
It's similar to some people that are getting pneumonia shots.
It may be his aftershock.
Satygetology, maybe?
It could be his aftershock. Something about Old Spice.
Old Spice, speaking of Old Spice, I, I heard there was a birthday recently. Did you hear the same thing?
Not my birthday, but-
Yeah, I did, I did, Mr. Saty turned, uh, eighty, eighty-six. Or sixty-six. Sixty-six on Friday.
Sixty-six on Friday.
Wow, what's another six?
You never know.
No, it was the ten.
It wasn't?
Six, six, six.
Well, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. You know?
You know?
I don't know why I go through this, but anyway, oh, this, this one here, we forgot, uh, this one here came through. That's the, yeah, right, that's the, uh, what do you call it, it's the-
Associate.
Associate member, associate member.
Would like, I need a motion to, to appoint Deborah Robbins, Associate Planning Board Member.
And the expiration of that would be?
June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, here he signs it, so that's good. So I'm done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we got the personnel done, we got the health department done, and new business. Board of Selectmen's meetings, Monday, January twenty-seventh. Certain select woman is not gonna be here, because she's gonna be out sunning herself down in sunny Florida. No, oh, it gets better.
Okay, cooling probably.
Close.
So I guess your schedule is two weeks here, two weeks down, two weeks there.
I wish, that would be awesome, right, it would be awesome.
I don't understand it, because she's the only one that actually works for a living.
Well, we don't have a private jet either, Paul.
That's really funny.
Okay, the next Board of Selectmen's meeting after that would be February tenth. Monday, February twenty-fourth. Monday, March tenth, and Monday, March twenty-fourth. Could be my last Selectmen's meeting.
Monday, um, so maybe one of those Mondays we could have, how about instead of going, like, having separate meetings during the week, if we could have our Monday meetings, the first hour, be with the departments, you know what I mean? And then the second hour started our, our meetings, so we're not meeting like twice a week.
I agree.
Yeah, okay.
So six o'clock?
So, we could, six to seven, we could do our department meeting, and then seven o'clock, we could start our regular meeting, or we could go five-thirty, whatever, whatever, but-
It's good for you guys, six o'clock.
It just makes more sense to meet once a week instead of-
Bring us some lunch.
So do it backwards, you mean?
Go backwards?
Okay, but, whatever, but I'm just saying, we can work that out, but I, I didn't know, what do you think?
Work it out, I'm good either way, you can work it out with Richard.
No, but what do you think about having it on a morning, all right?
Same day, that's worked for me.
And the departments would appreciate it, too.
So we can go according to the-
Yeah, I'll get with Janice and look at, 'cause some of it's also gonna depend upon when we start getting stuff in.
You don't know what the, well, yeah, you don't know what the deadline, okay. So that one, if the deadline were February tenth, then that would make sense, 'cause we'd be twenty-fourth, tenth, and then March, and that would be really quite-
It's very hard for me to get members here to get a quorum for either five or six o'clock, because everybody on this board is, is working.
Yeah, but maybe we can do our meeting like five-thirty to six-thirty, and then maybe start with department heads at six-thirty, you know, or, or whatever, but that makes, that makes more sense to me than meeting Monday, and then again on Wednesday, okay?
I can, you know, I, I can always try and get here, but that doesn't mean the rest of the board is-
No, that's fine, no, it makes sense, whatever way.
New business, you had something for new business?
Already done?
No, 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 she has something for new business.
Okay.
Well, no, I, um, shush. Okay, there's, there's an issue in town that's not, it, it really is a non-issue, but it really truly needs to be addressed, because the board and the, and the building inspector, and the town administrator, and the planning board are being dragged into something that is just really basically a non-truth. And I think that it really has to be addressed. The Parsons House Gallery, which is a quaint little art gallery located in a soot, um, is, is telling people that the Board of Selectmen shut them down. In no way has this board shut anybody down. And it's so easy for people to think that the board, this board, or any board of Selectmen, has the power to shut somebody down. We don't. We don't approve a business, or, and we don't disapprove of business, okay? The business is directed by the building inspector, and the building inspector has to abide by Mass General Law Bylaws Building Code. And if somebody wants a business in town, or if they wanna expand, they have to abide by what the building inspector insists of them. And it's not because the, the building inspector wants this stuff, it's because it is guided by law, okay? So we are not shutting anybody down, we don't have the intent of shutting anybody down. And, um, we actually welcome business in town, we, we welcome good, clean business, and I think that, you know, the Parsons House Gallery isn't, is an awesome part of the community, and we would love for them to stay, and, and we would work hand in hand with them, but we are not gonna break the law, we are not gonna bend the law, we are gonna do what we need to do. And, you know, it, it, it's just very sad to think that, you know, we've worked so hard to try to attract business, we, we put in the newspaper, we, we're working with Bull River, we're trying to attract good business in town, and we have great business in town right now, um, but we're not, we're not shutting anybody down. If, if Mr., um, Ruiz wants to leave and shut his, his business down, then that is his decision, this is not the decision of the board. And that being said, um, that's it.
To a follow-up on Lisa's comment, um, the building inspector has not shut anybody down, there has been no change, the, the only change is that, um, the Parsons House, they first got their permit, they had to get a special permit from the planning board, and that's how they've been operating. But just before Christmas, there was a request for a liquor license, to operate that business. Well, you request a liquor license, you have to meet certain standards that are placed on everyone by the state of Massachusetts. And the building inspector went and spent, oh, I guess, one, an hour and a half with the individual, just to explain how and what needed to be done, but apparently, um, didn't wanna do it, so they can't get the liquor license. So, based on what you see on Facebook, it's, it's the town's fault, but it isn't. So anyway, with that said, I wish, uh, that business, I, I would hope that business continues, but I guess, uh, the decision has been made to, um, close it down. On the old business, status of the website upgrade for virtual town hall.
Yeah, we're gonna try and go live on Friday.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good.
You heard it here, live.
Okay.
On tape.
Right.
On TV. Feasibility study.
We met, we're working on that.
We had a great, the board met with the company doing, um, the feasibility study, we had, we had good input, we had good back and forth, and, um, we're looking forward to having the final outcome sometime in early spring, um, but definitely by June.
And, uh, for those people, well, we had a, um, probably didn't get on camera earlier when we discussed this, and that is, uh, feasibility study is to look at town buildings, and the need for, uh, updating our infrastructure, including the town hall, police station, council and agent, some libraries. And, um, the Board of Selectmen has been working diligently to put money aside, so that we can, um, work for that endeavor. We have a company that's looking at, uh, everything here in town, and, um, the hope is that sometime towards the end of spring or early summer, we'll have a, uh, a plan in place as to how we can address the needs of the town. I know that when I first started here in Freetown, uh, working for the town back in nineteen seventy-four, as a police officer, uh, we were gonna build a new town hall. And, uh, this is nineteen, two thousand and fourteen, I'm sixty-six, and we still haven't seen the town hall. We have a police station that's in just deplorable condition, and, um, I mean, it's just terrible over there. And luckily, we have a fire, we have a good central fire station, our other two fire stations are, are old, but under Gabby's watchful eye, he keeps them up and running properly. And the COA building is really nothing more than a prefab house. So, uh, there's a lot of things gonna go into this study, luckily, the town, uh, has just had their bond rating increased, uh, by two points. And with the price of money, hopefully, the townspeople may find that this is a good time for us to, at some point in the next year, find that this is a good time for the town of Freetown to do something with the buildings, and maybe, uh, improvement we have. So, that's that, that's what the feasibility study is all about. Just before we started taping this meeting, uh, department heads were here today to talk about the budget timeline for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget, budget process was starting. It's under the watchful eye of the town accountant, and all our department heads were here, and everybody's on the same page as far as how we're gonna go about it. Richard will, uh, watch over it, and the whole, the Board of Selectmen will watch over it as it goes, as it goes through the process. The next thing on the agenda for old business is the status of, um, the Rochester, Acushnet, and Freetown Bound. The granite post, where we marked the, the corner of the bounds of the town, um, it may sound trivial, but, um, the Board of Selectmen has to go around and actually physically sign each bound every five years?
Five years.
Every five years. And, uh, we're in the process of doing that, I think we have thirteen bonds, we've already looked at four of them, and signed them, and missed, there's one that's missing, so Richard had contacted Acushnet and Rochester, and gonna ask them where we're standing on that right now.
They don't seem to have an interest in replacing this, so Lauren outlined a process for properly identifying it, and, uh, that's gonna occur in the spring, and then we'll follow up after that.
Okay, and then, uh, the last thing on the agenda here is the discussion of the Freetown Elementary, lease agreement with the Freetown Lakefield Regional School System. And I don't know, have, you all had a chance to read it?
I read it before.
You wanna hold off and, uh?
Yeah, let's talk about it on, 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 on-
Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, other than that, anybody have anything that they may wanna go into the second session on? Anybody else wanna do anything but adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and that concludes tonight's meeting. Turn it back on. The Finance Committee has one vacancy, they're shot-handed by one person. Anybody interested in, um, serving their ti, uh, serving some time on the Finance Committee, to help review budgets and so forth, uh, just send your name in to, uh, have it go with the alley. Send it into the, our, our administrative assistant, Ally Galls, you can send it to her email address, which you can find on the website. Just state that you're interested in becoming, uh, a member of the Finance Committee, and, uh, I'm sure we'll pass your name on to the Finance guys, and they'll review it. And you can, you can get appointed to Finance Committee. There you go. Anything else?
It's a critical time of year for the Finance Committee, we need-
They need help, they need help on the Finance Committee because of all the budgets they're doing.
We need a full board, but mildly.
We, there you go. Is that good enough?
Excellent.
Sounds good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's the end of the meeting now, thank you.